Welcome to the May 3, 2022 council meeting of the City of Wyndham. First item I'd like to take care of tonight is add to the agenda. Two permits. One is, and these are both from the Lions Club, amplification and temporary liquor license. Both of those I'd like to add. This is for June 11th and 12th. Location at Island Park in the backup is at the arena. Just a simple clarification, these were not charged extra. They were actually dropped off Wednesday in time for the meeting. They were just inadvertently not placed in the agenda. So I'd like to add that right after regular bills. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tonight in the consent agenda are the minutes of the council, April 19th, telecom commission, April 18th, planning commission, April 26th, utility commission, April 27th, and also the regular bills.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion Marv, second Jenny, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And that carries. Onto the permits that you have before you. I believe everybody has a copy of those and had a chance maybe to take a look at that. And do you want separate motions on this, Steve?
Probably.
Okay. First being the, for, this will be at Island Park, at the arena if rain, from the Wyndham's Lions Club. And this is a concert. And, correct? Yeah. And is there a motion to approve that application for the liquor license?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Lions Club for June 11th into the 12th.
I'll second that motion.
Motion Jenny, second by Lisa. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the permit. This is for the amplification permit at Island Park or the arena if it rains.
I'll make a motion to approve the amplification permit for the Lions Club for June 11th into the 12th at Island Park.
Motion Jenny, second by Jason. Any comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next comes our public hearings. I'm sorry, department heads. Do we have any department heads that want to come before us tonight? Okay, Spence.
Spencer Winsley, Community Center Director. So about a month ago, we approved a, basically if something serious were to happen in town, the community center would be a spot for, to seek refuge for, like if there was a flood or any kind of type of reason like that. We had like, when the school just had their bomb threat, this kind of brought up the whole topic of, well, what's the ultimate purpose of a building this size? And it was like, well, it's to, for this kind of stuff, for like a fallback location for the school. I have already signed something with the, the hospital. Like if something were to happen in the hospital, they needed more space or couldn't use their space, they could use our space. So I was kind of just trying to tie those all together and we created a policy at our last commission meeting and they all, my commission all agreed to that. Just want to keep, catch you all up that we have that now signed. So flood, tornado, earthquake, fire from the sky, we can, if the community center is still standing, we can be a site to, to host the world if need be. So we helped with the mass inoculations or vaccinations back when COVID first started happening. And so this is, it also fit within that parameter too, city, state, county, federal level problems, we could host those types of things. So, yeah, yeah, so we created that and the commission all agreed to, to it. It was just, it was like pieces here and there and now we just kind of have one umbrella document for that. So wanted to catch y'all up on that.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I guess I did not know that, but should a policy like that be adopted by the council as well, Steve?
The board has sufficient authority within that their ordinance granting them the ability to make policies. Rates and stuff are suggested, recommended by them and you set those, but board policies as long as it's within the function of the community centers in their purview.
I guess what I would ask then, could we see a copy of that?
Sure, I can.
I mean, just email it out.
Sure, absolutely.
So you know what their policy is on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Spence.
I just wanted to say like an important part of that is that when these things happen and the community center is taken over, that all other activities there must cease, such as the senior center, the dining and so forth, that that is a priority, that whatever is taken over is number one.
Right, that is part of it, it was spelled out too, was spelling out that if the, if the worst case happens, that's the, that's what it's, the building is there for, is to take care of these bigger issues, not so much, the other things are, you know, they can wait. So that's basically what the document also says.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Other department heads. Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearings. Jim is with us tonight. Just a brief, brief explanation on each one, if you would, Jim, and we'll take these one at a time, of course, and you'll explain it and then we'll open a public hearing after that.
Can you hear me now? All righty. At the last council meeting, you approved to schedule a public hearing and so tonight is the public hearing. But this involves the, the tax abatement program. It requires a public hearing, so, and a resolution. Tonight, we're calling to adopt the resolution, calling for the public hearing to be held on, or that was on April 19th, rather. Tonight, you're actually doing the public hearing. So the applicants have met all the statutory requirements outlined in Minnesota statutes and the county's home initiative guidelines necessary for approval of the tax abatement request. In 2019, Cottonwood County renewed its home initiative program, which provides guidelines and program, and a program through which the county, city, and school can grant abatement of real estate taxes for new residential housing. The purpose of the initiative is to provide incentives to encourage construction of new owner occupied and rental residential housing units, including single family homes, duplexes, multifamily complexes as well. So on December 3, 2019, the City of Wyndham adopted a resolution approving the revised Cottonwood County Home Initiative Guidelines and renewing its participation in the Cottonwood County Home Initiative Program. The program provides for a five-year abatement of real estate taxes on the increased market value of the property generated by the new home or duplex or multifamily building. The abatement commences on the first year of the taxes payable on the full increased assessed value of the property. The abatement does not include the real estate taxes on the land or any special assessments on the property. As far as fiscal impact, the estimated abatement on the real estate taxes by the city for the five-year period would be $7,536.85. And with that, we are recommending approval and hold a public hearing and approve the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on this specific one, which?
1901 Bud Road.
1901 Bud Road. Seeing none, we are going to open a public hearing. Public hearing is open. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll ask Jim, did you have any written comments on any of these or verbal comments?
I did not.
Thank you. With that, we're going to close the public hearing. That public hearing is closed. Is there any action the council wishes to take?
I would introduce the resolution approving the tax abatement for the property at 1901 Bud Road.
I'll second.
That resolution introduced by Marv and seconded by Jim. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call. Sherman.
Abstain.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farreg.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Resolution carries with one abstaining. Next one, Jim, I'm assuming you're going to tell us the same thing, this is a different property.
Pretty much, just different address. This is 1903 Bud Road, again, Go Vakers.
And could you just state the amount of the tax abatement for the record?
It would be over the five-year period, it'd be $7,536.85, over five years.
Thank you. If council have any questions? Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on 1903 Bud Road. Hearing is open. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Jim, was there any comments from the public on this one?
There was not.
Thank you. Council wants to take action.
I would introduce the resolution approving the tax abatement for that property at 1903 Bud Road.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Marv and seconded by Jim. Any discussion or questions? Ask for a roll call. Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Abstain.
Farreg.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Resolution carries with one abstaining. Very good. Next on the agenda is the USDA grant application for the fire department turnout gear. And we'll introduce Ed Gilmore, he's a specialist from, all the way from Fairbowl. So with that, he has some items to go over, they were included in your packet. This is a, regarding the grant application, and we have a public hearing that we're going to attend to right now. And we're going to open a public hearing on the fire department turnout gear, potential grant of 55 or 50?
Between 50 and 55,000, depending on what the total cost is.
Thank you. So we're going to open that public hearing and now is your chance to ask questions. Mr. Gilmore is here too, pertaining exactly what the application is about. Public hearing is opened. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Do we want?
We've not received any written comments either.
I always like to ask that question. Right. And so with that, seeing no public opposition to receiving grant dollars, we are going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ed Gilmore and he will go through the items that are in your packet in as much detail as he wants to go through.
Yep, yep, thank you. Yes, and Ed Gilmore with the USDA. So real briefly, what this program is, Community Facilities Program with USDA Rural Development, we do a variety of funding with this. It's everything from a couple thousand dollar loans for city hall improvements, all the way up to $20 million for, for a nursing home. So it, it's inclusive of public safety, police and fire department equipment, healthcare type stuff. Generally, it is a loan program first and grant, kind of with a grant feature, but we are able to do some small, basically small grant only type deals like this, work good for equipment, kind of small purchases. So that's, what we had was really three different applications for public safety, fire department and police equipment. We had enough funding to cover one of them, so that's the turnout that, that's been completed thus far. So essentially, the program is, there's a, a max percentage of the project is grant eligible based on the income. In Wyndham's case, it's 55% is the max. There's also a financial need component, which is me doing a review of the financials, justifying, yes, it's grant eligible, they have a need for the grant. Probably the most important one of this is, is the funding we have available. Out of everything we get funding for, this is the smallest appropriation we normally get. So it's kind of our state director, or excuse me, the program director kind of limits the grant sizes depending what funds we have for the year. So with this one, basically estimated the turnout gear for the fire department at 110,000, got it set up where it's fit, you know, half from the city, half from us. So the grant amount would be 55,000 and the city, essentially the city's contribution has to be the first in. So if it does come in cheaper, you're still required to put in the full 55,000, it would, any savings would come off the grant. However, I did leave it open, basically PPE in general. So say if the fire department decides, well, we only need 28, I think they got it slated for, for the 32 sets of the gear, say they only do 28 sets of turnouts instead, so it comes in a little cheaper, we'll have grant dollars left over, you can still spend that and maximize the full 55,000, as long as it's on PPE's related stuff. So if you decide, we only need 28, let's get some wildland stuff instead, do it that way. Yeah, as long as it's, the city's part comes in and basically, anything you pay for, you pay for that yourself out of pocket, then I reimburse you for the grant, once everything's said and done for it.
One quick question.
Yep.
Under, would you consider like a hose or hose repair PPE? Because it's, you know, they, you're using to protect the, you put out the fire, but it's also protecting the firefighters.
Yeah, possibly. It would be easier if it's gloves, helmets, wildland, stuff like that, if it was more hose and apparatus type stuff, if we were doing a truck type thing or something, then it'd be easier to attach it to, to that.
Specifically what it was, is there's a, a piece of equipment that allows them to reconnect nozzles and, and it ends to attach to the hose and extend the life of that. And we set my dollars aside for that at the last budget and due to significant price increases from the vendor, that went outside of our budget, but we did have a portion of dollars. So that's what I was just asking.
Okay.
We can maybe talk about that offline.
Yeah, it's, it's, one thing we don't like to get grant dollars back, we want the city to keep, you know, to be able to spend that. So if it's, yeah. It could be if there's something else you need that's close or related to PPE, we spend it on that and that frees up.
We'll take, we'll take a, we'll take a look at it and get back to, but I just thought as long as you were here, I'd ask a question.
Yep. So yeah, that's it, is basically the 55,000 grant. The security for that's a simple grant agreement with after we get funded. Some of the things from the files, such as the public hearing, stuff like that, I send off to the state office, get closing instructions for it. It's fairly simple, I come straight from the state office where it's pretty much, get the grant agreement signed. The condition that comes with the grant agreement is basically, whatever you buy with the federal money, the federal government has an interest in that equipment and just to ensure it's used for what it was meant to be. So what you really just have to do is keep an inventory of whatever you buy with it. So whenever you go to dispose of that years from now, check with us to make sure there still doesn't, we'd have to make a ruling if, when you're disposing of it, selling it for resale or what have you, if there's any portion of the grant has to be paid back. I would say that's normally unlikely with fire department agreement, that's going to go the, the 10 years or so it's worth and you're going to replace it type of thing. That would, you'd essentially let us know and we'd rule on it, say, yes, this met the condition, it's under the market value of 5,000, stuff like that, we don't have any more interest in it type of thing. There was some extraordinary thing where you, you sell it a year or two after the grant for some reason, then you probably have to pay something back proportional to the use, But yeah, that's, that's fairly rare with turnout gear and stuff like this. But as part of that, so every three years, we follow up and check to make sure you still have the equipment, it's still in use, you got any other needs for, you know, that we can help with that, that sort of thing. So we do do a security type inspection every three years, yep. It is part of the, the servicing on it. With grants only, yeah, with, with some of the stuff, when we have loans and ongoing debt service, stuff like that, there we get budgets and audits and things like that. With this, I don't think that you're well under the threshold. At most, when you do your audits or budgets every year, we might ask for a copy with it. I think that's the biggest thing is, is the security, you know, making sure you still have the gear and haven't got rid of it every three years with it. So yeah, it's basically tracking what you spent the grant dollars on and where that's located, you know, that makes it easier on you if we come ask, you know, to check on it, that sort of thing. But that's, yeah, as long as it's, it's used for what it was meant to be, which again, it'd be an extraordinary thing, like you merge fire departments and have extra gear or something, something like that. So there is a section in the letter of condition that covers what we call the compliance review and that's something I'll work, work with Steve on completing. Essentially, it lists all the different civil rights and federal laws that come with taking federal funding. So the compliance review is, is simply a tool to let you know these laws apply since you have federal grant dollars and if someone from the residents or, you know, from the population asks about it, then, then you're aware of this sort of thing. But it has to do with ADA compliance, language barriers, things of that nature. Fire department equipment's not really public access type materials, not just, you know, can't just have anybody walking around the, the fire station. But if, basically, the takeaway is if someone has concerns or questions or anything for the fire department, they're going to come to a council meeting. So you have to make sure council meetings are open and available to everybody. If there's a language barrier or, or disability type issue, you have to accommodate them as part of, part of accepting the grant dollars. But really, I, at grant closing before then, I would fill out an ADA checklist type thing on city hall. If you did have a language barrier, what's the plan? I keep it very basic for, for what the requirements are. I really leave it, that to me is more city business, how you handle those sort of things. My job is to make you aware, these laws apply once you take federal funding. That's, that's really it, the big stuff. I've got my other questions. Essentially, there's a sam.gov registration the city has, you just have to make sure it's kind of administrative type, so make sure that's renewed every year, it just ties into, anybody getting federal funds can't be delinquent on federal debt and that's how they track Yeah, really, that's it, is basically, once you get the, if you accept the grant funding, once you get the equipment purchased, I just need to know it's purchased, we write up the grant agreement thing, you know, a couple different ways we can do it, whatever's easiest, but really pay for the whole thing upfront, show me it's paid, you know, have a, the paid invoice from that. Normally, it's supposed to come out through an inspection to see that you have it. If I'm in the area, great, I'll do it, if not, you can send me pictures of it, just to keep it, keep it moving, type of thing.
Okay, with that, I think unless there's any questions for Ed on this, it probably would be in order to accept the letter of intent and conditions. Do you care if we do them all together?
No, however you guys want to do it, yeah, it's basically, that's all I need, basically you accept the, the city accepts it, then I need the, yeah, really, the, basically there's a letter of intent to meet the conditions of the letter of conditions and a request for obligation. So that's, I just, once I get those back with Dominic's signature on it, then I send it off to the state office. The program director, Terry Lawagi, will sign it, once it's approved, and then the money will be obligated or reserved at that time. So once it's reserved, another thing, you'd have at least up to three years to spend it, so a project like this won't take but, you know, a fraction of that, so, but if yeah, something happens, you put it on hold, we've got time to work with, so it's not, not rushed. Yep, yep.
Okay.
Would you like a motion then, Mr. Mayor, on, I can make the motion on accepting the letter of intent and conditions and the request for obligation of funds?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do it your way. I do them separate all the time. I'm used to working with Ed's way, anyway. There's a motion to, to approve the letter of intent to meet conditions and it's been seconded along with, I should have included, and the request for obligation of funds approval. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, could you touch base on, you know, we had a couple other items in our list?
Right, yeah.
And if you could, are they still active applications that we have?
Correct. So yeah, we had, kind of, I was hoping we could basically wrap, it was three different applications. Originally, when I talked with Terry about it, we were going to put it all into one, do one, one lump sum grant for, basically doing a public safety type thing and have all three projects in one, didn't get enough funds to do that. So that's what basically spun it off and did it just to turn out gear first. There was also, there was really multiple applications for four different cities I was juggling at once and it was kind of hurry up and wait for several months, then it's quick, give me updated stuff and I'll get it, get the request in now that we have money. The updated financials I requested, Steve got that to me in the same day, that's why yours got funded, because I was able to get it in faster. Like I said, I have four cities, I only got two of them, Wyndham and one other funded. So the other two cities that didn't get funded, I've given them another chance to update their stuff, one of them did send me it and so I was working on that today. So I got to finish that one and then do the second one for Wyndham and kind of submit those together. Problem is, we're, basically the funding we used for this one came from the, so the federal government started on a couple continuing resolutions, that's the money we used to pay for this one and now we're out of funds. But the omnibus budget that was finally passed for the rest of the fiscal year, we're supposed to get another appropriation from that. Last I heard, it was six to eight weeks to get it, so that's, of course, how soon do we get it and how much are they going to give us and how many other projects does Terry have in the state will come into it? But that's, I can't say for certain, but I'm optimistic we'll get at least one of the other ones funded in that one, then maybe the third one might have to get pushed in the next fiscal year, which is October for the federal government. So it might, it would be sometime after October when we get the 2023 fiscal funding, like CF grants are the last thing. funding, like, CF grants are the last thing that gets funded in the lowest amount, so like, supposed to get them in October, we got them in March of this year, so that's how it goes with that sometimes, hopefully we'll get it a little bit sooner. But I'll talk to Terry, but unless he tells me otherwise, I'd maybe combine those two and fund them in one bigger grant, if he thinks we're gonna have the funds, we'll do it that way, most likely, I think it's just gonna be one out of the two. We'll get in the next round of appropriations. The downside is, in October of this year, we're switching our income numbers, so right now we go off a 2010 median household income, we're updating to the 2019 numbers. So Wyndham's income is increasing, and I think is most likely to drop you from being eligible for 55% down to 35% based on the income. So it'd still be a good decent sized grant, just maybe not as much, so if I can avoid that, get them both, you know, both projects funded before then, that'll be ideal, but yeah, I've got everything I need for yours and the one other cities, and that one's only maybe like seventeen thousand, so that's a fairly small, small one, so I'm gonna put at least one from Wyndham and that one together, and what I send to the state office, and then, then yeah, then it'll just be once we, if and when we get the funds from the last, the last budget, omnibus budget, whatever, the full, full thing for the fiscal year. So it's just, it's that, at one time I had four applica, or four cities, multiple applica, you know, one city had two, three, so several applications, I want, that's just my, that's just in the southwest part of the state. So if we do get, and it's only a couple hundred thousand, that's gotta cover the whole state, and I don't know how many other, you know, there's another half dozen of us putting in applications to get funding, but that's all I'll do, probably within the next week or two, send in the second one. I would just, do you guys have a preference, if it's the radios or the boat?
Fire chief is here. And police chief, what are you saying, radios?
Yeah, we're subject to, there's some federal issues on that, as far as needing to make the switch.
Okay.
Unless there's something that comes through the legislature in the next week or two, then the radios would be our priority, right?
This is shit, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what I'll do, is, numbers wise, kind of getting into the details, but basically, I'll start and get it set up to do both of them, and then get feedback from Terry Lawagi, see if he says, no, we're not gonna have funding for both, then, then I'll spin it off to just the radios, and that way, kind of do it, that's kind of how it went with the turnout, so.
So if a city is fortunate to get a project funded, do they in effect then go to the back of the line and start over, or how?
No, it would, no, it doesn't, it's basically when, when the applications got submitted in kind of order, but also there's priority points to whether it's a, a public safety thing, or a healthcare issue, or what, each administration has different priority points for projects and stuff they wanted. So I think that's, so no, just because you got one doesn't, doesn't hamper you from getting the other, we do try to spread it out and help as many communities as we can, and so the other, they said, yeah, it was about four cities I got applications at about the same time from, it's so, try to, try to spread it out in a manner that I can get the most, the most funded to the most people type of thing, spread out the money for it. And so sometimes, if we have two more projects than we can fund, the program director might put a cap on it, so say you might be eligible for fifty thousand, but we need to spread the money around, we got way too many applications, then he might put a cap and say, no, the max for anyone grant's gonna be thirty thousand this year, that, that would, that would be more what happens than just one city getting more than one application, that's, no, it doesn't, doesn't hurt you if you have more than, more than one project, more than one need. So that's why, yeah, I'll see if I can get both of them in, would be ideal, but the limits of the funding type thing.
Okay, well, we sure appreciate USDA and their help on this, that goes a long way, and thank you very much, and thanks for coming down, and I hope you have to do this again.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, hopefully, it was a couple weeks ago, Terry said six to eight weeks, hopefully another month or so we'll have more funds again. But if not, that would be, yeah, the downside, if it's after October, it might drop the max, maybe do from, which, that's not terrible, I've seen that in a lot of cities where they'll go from a good sized grant to not being grant eligible at all, with a lot of them, so just going fifty-five to thirty-five is pretty good. It's just, all the incomes are going up and we're not expecting a big, so it's compared to the, the state non-metro median household income, that number, that's not expected to go up significantly, so if you got a ten, twenty, and this is all based off the American Community Survey, so it's not always a hundred percent accurate, so.
Okay, I think we're good, thanks Ed, appreciate it. Okay, next item we're gonna go through is the personnel recommendations, included in your pack, package is the library director resignation, and Dawn is here tonight. You know, I'll be the first to say thank you for all your service, Dawn did come to the personnel committee and addressed the personnel committee here about a week ago, and we had a good discussion.
Retirement.
Retirement, not resignation, but it said resignation, you put it on here, Steve. All right. So, retirement, I don't know what she's gonna do with all her time, but, you know, she'll probably go to the library and read books.
Yep.
Yeah, right, maybe she'll be a board member, anyway. So with that, with hesitation, I would recommend that we accept the library directors, Dawn Ahmet, her retirement.
Effective June 25th.
Effective June 25th. Okay, I guess Dawn's gonna keep her.
I would make that motion to accept Dawn's letter of resignation, her retirement.
I'll second that motion.
That motion by Marv and second by Lisa, any discussion or comments?
Dawn, it's been a privilege to be watching how things go, thank you for all your hard work, last seven years as director, and you have done a great job.
Yes, I too want to thank you, you know, almost thirty-four years with the library, and the passion you have for the library, you know, anybody can tell that just listening to you, and all the work that you do with the library, not just, you know, like people think checking out books or whatever and researching what to have there, it's finding all the funding, finding all the programming that you bring to the community, all the additional work that I don't think people realize that you do as a library director, so thank you very much.
And not to add, she has that library left better than the condition she received it, so a very nice job on the rebuild. With that, I am gonna call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I can't vote, I'd say aye. Thank you, Dawn. And also, during the personnel discussed, you know, the, the next round here, and Marv's the chairman of the personnel, did you have any comments on the next item to advertise?
No, I guess just to generally advertise to fill a position.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Marv, second by Jenny, to advertise for the position that has been reviewed and some minor changes, I think is all, Steve?
Yep.
Just some minor changes.
Those are shown in the packet.
Yep, as shown in the packet, so, any final comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, very good, thank you.
Just to clarify with Mr. Grunig and Ms. Quaid, the motion did include the re-advertising what the job description has proposed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, ADA service contract extension, that was at the personnel committee also, Marv, any update on that?
No, I guess we have been advertising for the full-time position, and we didn't get a lot of choices yet, so the thought was to continue to advertise, which required us to have Mr. Hartshorn extend his contract, so that's the recommendation.
Okay, recommendation of the personnel committee is to, to engage Jim Hartshorn for, until May 30th, is the date on that, so that'll take us through almost the end of the month, is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to extend the contract to May 30th for Jim Hartshorn.
I'll second.
Motion Jason, second by Jenny, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for sticking with us another month, Jim. Next, next item, we have the community center on call position, this is to add Corey, I can't remember his last.
Casey Harrington.
Casey Harrington, okay, and this is to fill in, nighttime duties, barkeeper, that sort of thing, so if I need to add anything else, Spencer, give me a nod, he's saying we're good to go, and the wage I believe is twelve fifty an hour, is there a motion to approve that hire?
I'll make the motion to hire Casey Harrington as the on-call at the community center.
Second.
Motion by Lisa and second by Jason, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seasonal hiring, this is for the pool and recreation, do you want to go through every name, or can we all read them on the, okay, thank you very much, they were in the packet and posted publicly, all the names are up there, and the recommendation is from Tim, who's here, if you had any questions? Okay?
There may be a few other stragglers as we have some, but we need to kind of get some things rolling, so we had this first batch for you.
And as I understand it, these are all returning employees?
Some are new.
Some are new, okay, okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve the list that is presented?
I'll make that motion to accept the hiring of the pool staff and the recreation staff as listed.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa, for that motion, and second by Jason, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mayor appointments, okay, and I have to apologize, and on this one, I didn't make my phone call, and I hate to put Ms. Mickelson, Ms. Mickelson on the hook here, have you talked to her?
No, but I've talked to the first one on the list, and she's more than willing.
Okay.
For that one, too, so whichever you.
Okay, and, no, I'm gonna forget the first name on the list, too.
Christina Wolf.
Okay, Christie?
Christina Wolf.
Christina Wolf. Wolf, okay, and I will accept that, you have talked to her?
I have.
Okay, because I did not, yep, I did not, so I will accept that.
And that's to fill an unexpired term of a board member's departing.
Correct, correct. And thanks go to, and who's the retiring one?
Susan Ebling.
Yeah.
Oh, Susan Ebling, I believe she's leaving town or something, so, yeah, so no longer able to, but I know she's been a tenured there for many years, so we appreciate her help there. Okay, so with that, that would be my recommendation, is there a motion to approve the library board appointment?
I'll make that motion to approve Christina Wolf.
Second.
I think I heard Lisa first. Motion by Jenny, second by Lisa, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, as long with other appointments, I did talk to, now I'm not gonna think of her name, she had the short term. Terry Teegles, I'm terrible with names lately, gotta ask Steve so he can remind me, Terry Teegles, I did talk to Terry Teegles, that is one hospital board appointment that I could take care of tonight, there's two other people interested in the, in the new position, so I would recommend Terry Teegles to be reappointed for a full term on the hospital board.
I would make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, second by Jenny, to approve Terry Teegles to the hospital board for the next full term, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, anyone with new business tonight? Steve, nothing? Old business? Steve did send out the doodle poll, and it looks like we got a bingo.
Yep, we got a bingo for, May 18th is Wednesday, so the day after your next council meeting, if you wanna talk about time, I had originally scheduled something around five o'clock, meet here, hopefully it's late, late enough, and maybe go for about four hours, so that'll get us to about half of the spots, and so I talked to department heads to make sure that some of the, they're available that evening, and so the first half of our list works, so I've got that up on the screen, that's the list I provided you previously, so we'll probably start out, and then we'll do the, the water, wastewater plant, community center, and then drive through Teegles, look where the new line shelter is gonna go, they've got it, they've actually got it, some flags out and some paint to see where that is, drive through the Semstone properties, we got a project there, if it's dry enough, we can hit Mayflower Park, street shop, and then we'll end up at the liquor store, so, would you like us to see if we can arrange a bus to, so we'd meet here so we can all go together, or, okay?
I see that you budgeted for that, so I would say that we should do the bus, okay? Another question I had, too, and I don't want to open this wide open, but if there was, because this is a public meeting, and I wish I would have asked you this before, but I think it's, it may be good if on this tour, that you would invite our local newspaper and KDOM if they wanted to write along.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, if you want to extend that to them, Steve?
Yep.
Doesn't mean nill attend, but I think it's an opportunity to see, and, you know, there will be, this is a public meeting, and there will be discussion on items, no action taken at all, but there will be discussion between the councils, so I want to make sure we are open with that, okay? And I would say 5:00 PM, that is what was doodle polled, so I think we'll go by that. And I would say 5:00 PM, that is what was doodle polled, so I think we'll go by that, starting at 5:00, I think that we should set a special meeting then for 5:00 PM on May 18th, that'll last approximately till 9:00 o'clock.
I'll make a motion to set the special meeting for Wednesday, May 18th, at 5:00 o'clock.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both, motion by Jenny, second by Lisa, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else on our old business? Do we need to discuss when we're going to do the next one after this?
I thought probably we would end up doing, sending out another doodle poll, we'll see how this one goes, and then we can talk about it after that.
Council comments, Jason, you want to go first?
Just want to remind the public about the fire department's raffle and dance on Saturday night, the 7th, so if you can make it out to that, be, be great.
Jim?
I have a little.
Marv?
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, okay.
Can you get police protection on this bus, Jeff?
If the council thinks we need it. It depends on who else may go, so I'll leave it at that, Jim. Marv?
I would just like to thank Dawn again for her years of service and, and her ownership in the library, because it was pretty evident in the discussions we had at the personnel, so, thank you, Dawn, and then happy Mother's Day, I guess, and Sunday.
Yeah, Marv, you got kudos for that, I bet, at home. Lisa, happy Mother's Day.
Well, Marv did steal mine, I was going to, you know, extend everyone to happy Mother's Day.
Okay, I want to wish or give a shout-out to all our city staff that are in that administrative professionals, last week when we celebrated Administrative Professionals Day, we have a lot of city staff that really step up and are dedicated to their job within the city, so I want to just make sure that we appreciate them and let them know that. Also, we have Cinco de Mayo we're celebrating this week, so that is a good thing, and I like my, to go out for tacos or some nachos and salsa, that sounds like a good thing to do this week, and the weather hopefully will cooperate to feel a little warmer here in May, the fireman's dance again, hopefully, people go out and support that, and then Mother's Day on Sunday to wrap up the week, so hopefully, you all enjoy your week.
Thank you for that list, it pretty much takes care of everything, but I'll see if Steve can beat that, anything, Steve?
No.
Okay, Marv?
Just listening to the gentleman with the grant, it sounds like grants are tied with the timeliness and stuff, and, and Steve reacted, so I'd like to say thank you to her city administrator for getting that taken care of.
Yeah, I got to give the mayor credit, he tipped me off that USDA had a little extra money, so I kind of got on it, so, we'll give credit to it.
And thank you too, Steve. Steve's taken another couple actions, too, that I will thank him for, not, not specifically, but a letter to the Minnesota DNR and to Department of Transportation, the, I'll say, I think it's worth noting that the price went up on the three snowplow trucks, and Steve right away caught that, responded right away, and it amounts to about $20,000 on the, for the three trucks, so, you know, and these are under state contracts, I think it was a, a good letter that Steve put together and sent to our local congressman also, so I think that was good. Yes, happy Mother's Day, happy Mother's Day to my wife, nobody's done that one yet, but they all deserve credit, I can say that, and for putting up with their husbands, or significant other, or whatever it may be. So, with that, and also the fire department, make sure you go out and do a good service to your community and support your local fire department, I, I think that's very valuable. Thanks to USDA once again, and then, finally, Dawn, we'll have something later to say about you, but thank you for your years of service, so, with that, I think we're good, also, thanks, Jim, for sticking around again, so if you can stay longer, let us know. All right, with that, we're going to adjourn by unanimous consent.